Call this regular meeting of council to order, May 7th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Additions to the agenda, under citizens comments. Under citizens comments, we will add Teresa Miller for Circles program. Department head, Stephanie Smith, executive session to hire lifeguards. New business charter ordinance number 1063-19. Consent agenda appropriation ordinance petty cash of $455.18. Executive session, executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personal manner exception, Chief Adams. And new business variants for 204 South Monroe and Rezone S&amp;S Tire. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries for. Okay, on to citizens comments, Wayfair's in.
That would be me. If I can get a, hi, thank you, my name's Marcel Scholes. I bought the motel about six years ago. I got a, handed you guys a letter on Friday. Haven't made any profit in the six years that I've been there. Have taken out four loans in the last three years just to continue to pay bills. And I'm done. I'm very happily ready to turn it into a couple apartments and a weaving studio and call it my home. Talked to Carl Miller and it would take my taxes down by about $1,200 a year. Talked to my insurance, it would take it down about $300 a year, you know? I could get my bills cut in a third if I did that. So all I'm asking is, do you guys want a motel out there? If so, what can you do to help me? And that's me, so. Okay? Alright.
Counsel, any discussion at the moment?
Yeah, I don't know what we could do to help. Think maybe there are people out there to help as far as maybe staff kind of help economic development. I don't know if you've talked to them at all.
I have talked to Carolyn, she had, you know, advised me that I could get some grants and stuff. Wasn't, she wasn't at the time able to help me walk me through them. Not sure I really want to go that way.
Yeah.
But I mean, even with redoing everything, I mean, I got your letter, you redone quite a bit. You don't even see like here in the future after, I'm assuming all this is paid for, that you've done work on, you don't see yourself picking up business now?
Well, part of the problem is, is that the Stafford motel is quite nice now. You know, the work crew that was supposed to be down on the Turner, on the roundabout, booked rooms with her. So, you know, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's room for two motels in the, in the county, that's, you know? That is one of my questions.
How does your nightly rate compare to hers?
Um, I run five to $10 cheaper, actually. But I also have half the rooms that she has, which kind of is part of the problem, so.
Well, when did you finish doing all your work, I guess? Was it like, were you done, were you done doing all the work here pretty recently?
Um, we finished up the last room a year ago.
So I mean, you haven't seen anything get better since then?
No, no, actually, my first four months, I'm down about $2,500 from what I was last year.
Really?
Yeah, so.
It, I've been thinking on it, I mean, since I got your letter, it'd be sad to see a business go. I just, I usually can come up with some ideas, but this is a tough one, um.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry if it comes down to that. It's definitely good to have it for hundreds and stuff like that.
Well, you know, that's also the problem, there's a lot more lodges out here than there was, you know, six, eight, 10 years ago, so. I haven't had a full opening weekend for pheasants since I've been here, so, yeah.
I don't know.
No thoughts, no comments?
I guess, if you, if you were in our position, what, what do you want from us? Let's flip it around on you.
I, you know, I, of course, you, you guys can't, you know, do that, I mean, you know, tax cuts would be wonderful, but I'm sure that's not a possibility. I did finally get on the web, city webpage. Maybe a little bit of advertising, I don't know. Sign out on 281 would be great.
Yeah. Big sign.
So I mean, to answer the question, I mean, what, what can the city of St. John do to help? I mean, us as a city, I mean, even, even thinking about helping with utilities, if you could actually show paperwork that you're at a loss, I don't think we could help a whole lot, I mean.
Okay.
Just my opinion on it. I don't think that'd make much of a difference from the numbers that you're kind of running at us, would it?
I don't know, probably not.
I'd be more than happy to step up and look at options for maybe trying to find more advertisement along the, the highways. I mean, we are very close to two intersecting highways, maybe getting, you know? I'm not from here and I can't tell you, I knew there was a motel here.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, and a lot-
The problem, you, you have to go through the state to put a sign on the highway.
Okay.
And it's not cheap and they're very particular.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is one of the reasons I haven't done it.
It is a long, drawn-out process.
Is there, is there a difference with it being like along the highway compared to being like back into the field?
If it's back into the field, you have to own the property.
Okay.
You have to pay taxes on that small piece of property.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of, I think the actual application book to have one along the highways is about that thick.
Okay, well-
Your state.
Yeah.
How about signs on the, on the two St. John's signs that we have on the north and south end of town during the times that we don't, we're not advertising like for Jubilee and that stuff? I mean, those panels are about 18 or 20 inches wide and about four foot long or five feet long, you know, I mean, it would be something that, that might help a little bit.
I'd be open to that, I mean, I was actually, look, if you look at those signs, they're kind of old already too, but. Anyways, looking at those signs, I mean, they're kind of beat up, I think that, that could be an option to help a local business out. Certain time of the year, put them up to make people over at the Jubilee. Uh, I mean, just, I, I drive a lot out of, out of state and it's, there's some tons where you just need, you need to stop right there in the middle of nowhere and get a hotel and a lot of people don't know about that hotel. That's something I would be open to, those signs, what do you guys?
Can we ask Ashley, since she is here with economic development?
Would you be interested in going to like a three-day business workshop out in Colorado? We sent to the Walsh Farm for Maxwell there last year, it's called Destination Boot Camp. Kind of gets you thinking outside of the box as to how to market your business.
Okay, but it would depend on when it is.
Okay. If you want to stop by the office, I can give you information, we do cover the cost to attend, it's a couple thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
I only want to send you if you're truly interested in maybe delving into your business a little deeper to see if there's some things you can change.
Okay.
But that is out there.
Okay.
Joe, why don't you take a look at those signs, see what the cost of those would be?
I know the last time we had one then, we spent a hundred bucks, I think, on them or something, you know, but I'll talk to a couple of people, we recently had some signs done for the dumpster stuff down south.
Okay.
And like I say, they slide in and out, you know, and we've, we've got some for Jubilee, we did some for the, for the car show around the square last year that we just put in and take back out, but the signs themselves need to be repainted desperately bad, they've been there a long time.
Okay, can you look into that and bring it to council next time?
Let me, let me see what I can find out.
Okay.
Yeah, while we're at it, I mean, if you can get Jamie on redoing that sign, make it nice and pretty.
Yeah, it's a tough shape, it's really faded bad.
But as far as your, your deal goes, I mean, is that something you guys would be open to, to help a local business or not?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I mean, just being upfront, I mean, you come in here with, and the attitude is kind of like you've thrown the towel in, I mean, is it, I'm just asking you upfront.
You know, I, you know, the last, yeah, last two or three months, it's been like, alright, you know, I've been empty for, you know, I guess I had three rooms this weekend, but other than that, I've been empty for about two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of, it's discouraging.
I mean, what do you, what's your opinion on the signs, is it something that, I mean, I, in my opinion is if you invested in the sign and we let you put it in there after the Jubilee's over, is that something you're willing to spend the money on?
I would be willing to try it, yes.
How do you guys feel about that, after Jubilee?
I'm okay with it.
If you just kind of get with Jeff on the dimensions thickness of it and, if we've got city guys, do you think help we're putting in?
I'll try and stop out, I'm going to be gone for a couple days, KMU conference, so first of the week I'll stop out and I'll, I'll bring you one out, you can kind of see what you think you could do with it.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And Jamie, you can kind of look into some of the advertising, see if there's anything you can do to help out, if you would please.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Does that mean I could go then? Am I going?
You're welcome. All right, moving on, Stafford County Economic Development.
Jamie said she included a letter from the Wetlands and Wildlife National Scenic Byway in their materials, so I'm not, this is not economic development related per se, but I am on this committee. We meet every other month, Clayton Grimmon and I are the, Clayton Grimmon and myself are the representatives from Stafford County. The committee is asking each of the seven communities along the byway if you would be interested in giving an annual contribution to help with marketing or any events and keeping the website up to date. The signs that are over by the courthouse are related to the byway, I don't know how many of you even realize they're over there on the west side of the courthouse, but that's part of it. And then the end of this month, we are actually having a ribbon cutting for the huge signage that was put out at the rest area on Highway 50, if you've noticed that as well. But that's what the funds would be used for, is to keep this, the interpretive signage updated and, and legible. Some of them have started fading over the years and they originally put in through grant funding, but that's not always available. There's some in Stafford as well, and then obviously going up north of Stafford into Quavira, and this also goes into Barton County. Currently Barton County is footing all of the cost of the website, several thousand dollars to keep it up and running and maintained. But I told them, they're probably not even going to get a response, they just send a letter and nobody comes at all, so I, they kind of appointed me to come in and talk to you guys. If you don't like the idea of $500, is there even a lesser amount that you would be willing to give?
Does this have to do with the, like where, they give you like a CD and you put it in and it fits all the spots?
The audio tour.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
These are from the same people that have the suit against the water issues in our county and we want to support them?
I know, trust me, our economic development office struggles with that.
My answer is-
I hear you, fully.
Good luck, I could, my answer.
I hear, that's fair, they asked me to come present it to you and I told them I would, but I am on the same page with you, Jim.
That's kind of E B to it.
Well, I could kind of see the wheels turning.
Clayton, Clayton Grimmon's going to Stafford City Council meeting to ask the same thing, so. I honestly, personally have struggled with, this has been kicked down the road for two years now, since I've been on the committee. And I said, if you're going to approach city councils and ask for funding, are you going to show me data of what tourism dollars the byway's actually bringing in for us? No one can give me solid data, I've spoken with Julie over at the Stafford Motor Inn and she might tell you that she gets four people a year that stay there specifically because of the byway. And I'm sure St. John sees less of it, honestly, because you're going to come south out of Quavira and go right back north. I think they tend to hang out in great bend, there's just more amenities there. But I told them I would bring it to you, so I respect your honesty and I'm on the same page.
Me personally, I can't get behind it.
They can.
For the same reason, I mean, I'm not willing to give money to somebody that's trying to take away something that could be damaging not only to St. John but Stafford County.
I hear you.
So, I mean, I would be a no on it.
That's fair.
I'm the same way. But I'm being nice, that's all I'm saying.
Thanks for coming.
I'm the same stance, you know, with the water issues, so.
Well, it's, it's all valid, it's all valid, um, arguments on this side.
Yeah.
I know, if this wasn't happening, then probably council would be a little bit more amicable to go ahead and take care of it, but, you know.
And I'm not sure we're any farther along with the state on that anyways, I mean, I think at this point we're looking at a lawsuit, so.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
When you want to talk about CDBG, you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Jamie and I attended the Community Development Block Grant Funding Conference a week ago in Salina. I know you guys have thrown around the discussion of maybe wanting to pave Fifth Street, this is a grant program that can be utilized. The biggest thing is that your community as a whole has to be 51% low to moderate income. Currently St. John is only sitting at 40%. And a lot of, that, the current data is based on 2015 census estimates, so if we want to do a project, what we're going to have to do is survey the whole town to essentially prove the census wrong. So this is going to take door-to-door surveys, a lot of my time, Jamie's time, just to collect that data, but if we want to start conversations, if it's something you guys are interested in, we have to have some community meetings before we even start in on that to know that the community supports it as well, not just you guys as a council. So I don't know if you want to talk about that or not, 'cause I know you haven't met since Jamie and I went to that, but.
If we were at 41% out of 50?
You have to be 51% LMI to be eligible, we're only about 40% in St. John.
I mean, what's changed between that?
And a lot of that is skewed by the agriculture around here, and people when they're filling out the census do not do it right, they don't, they're not honest on there and it kills us, honestly. So again, we would have to do door-to-door surveys, Carolyn did it when the sidewalk project went on for that southeast quadrant of town. It's a lot of legwork and hours to do that.
She surveyed the whole community or just that area?
Just that, that area of town.
But since it's a street, we would have to do the whole community because it-
Yeah, I just can't remember whether every project was.
I mean, and can't use that survey data because, because that was prior to the 2015 estimates that they're currently using.
They used to send out surveys, but you had a lot of people that never responded to them.
And that's the problem, that's Carolyn spent hours with kids even going door-to-door just to get them filled out to meet that. And, and where we're sitting right now with population data, I mean, we're roughly 1,200 people, you're talking 615 surveys coming back that show that LMI. So I don't know.
What's considered low to moderate?
That I'm honestly not sure, I'd have to check and go back to, but.
So what are you asking of us, I guess, that I missed that part?
If it's a grant program that you guys want to pursue, it's a 25% match minimum. However, I talked with the Great Plains Development people that would probably be your grant administrator because they know the ins and outs of all of it and that's, they were the administrator for the sidewalk project. They, they said to be super competitive, they actually recommend going in dollar for dollar, so a 50% match. So, again, I don't know if you guys want to make that a priority or not. If you do and we do surveys, we need to apply by November of this year, if you kind of want to just keep it in discussions, since this data will come out next year and you can apply by next November.
Well, the cost of paving that would probably be approach a million dollars, even at 25%, that'd put us on virtual 250,000.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think the city has that kind of money and I don't think the sales tax revenues, receipts that we're seeing from that economic development district justify us spending any more money in that district. Divide the sales tax receipts by the sales tax rate and it'll give you kind of a pretty good idea of the monthly sales and-
You can't do the sales tax rate because that's the 1%.
But it's the extra 1%, but you had the whole sales tax revenues, I believe is what you gave me, if I'm not correct.
The numbers?
It's total revenues, sales tax revenues generated from that district. I believe that's what I asked you for.
The numbers that I gave you is what we pay back, and that's the 1%.
The 1%, that's, that's where they get the 50,000 manually.
Where'd you come up with a million dollars that it'd take to do that, I guess?
I think it's just, just divide square foot by distance.
Well, another way to look at it, we wouldn't even shell out what was that, 90,000 to get 500, but where are we going to get money to do the whole thing? Right, at this point, I've been waiting on a grant, but it's no different.
I guess my question is, is if you do the, do the, everything to apply for it, to find out what the LMI is, when they come out and do that next year, because they will do it in 2020?
Census data will come out, yes.
Will that information be any better next year for us? If, the information we get this year, are they going to base it off of next year's what they come up with? So if we applied for the same grant next year after they've done theirs?
So if they release-
What we did is going to be wiped away.
Correct, if we go, if we go and do surveys this year and don't apply, we're not going to be able to use them next year because the new census data will have come out. I'm guessing it still won't meet the 51% threshold, which means we're going to have to do surveys again, so.
And that's what I'm saying, is if, if we do it now and it meets the 51%.
Mm-hmm, and we apply.
And maybe we don't get it this year.
Right.
But if we go to apply next year and it, the census is lower than the 51%,
Correct.
You're going to start the process all over.
Yes.
To prove it wrong.
Correct. So I don't want to start this long process unless you guys are experienced.
I would say I wouldn't start it this year.
Okay.
I mean, not-
If we can't afford it.
Well, not only that, I mean-
Because that's a lot of legwork.
But here's the thing, most of them grants, you're going to have to have that 51%.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying.
But what I'm saying is, why would we spend all the time this year?
Correct.
To do it for them to do the census next year?
Yeah, I don't recommend-
And then it'd be lower than what we already done and have to re-prove it if we want to apply for something again next year. I mean, it's a lot of extra work.
Oh, yeah.
Wait and see what happens after the first of the year and then if you want to do the, that would just be my thought, just save everybody a lot of time.
If we just wait till after the fourth year and then we can address it again at that time.
And I think that's fair, because, because it will, it'll take public meetings just with the community. They told us at that meeting, you kind of have to lay out multiple projects for then, the community to decide, okay, do we want to focus on sewer first, then do streets or just streets or-
And see, and I think that would benefit this, us as a council is to have a game plan of what infrastructure needs to be taken care of.
Yeah.
Prior to just Fifth Street, because I'm pretty sure our sewer, storm sewer-
But with that, we also have to look at, they, you know, it's discouraging going to those things and, and wanting to do those things because the biggest question is what are we doing, what has been going on as a community, as the city, to maintain and like, what are you doing to help yourself, pretty much? And when you can't answer that question very well. So we just wanted to present to you what we had and, and that it is going to be- You know, Fifth Street isn't the only unpaid street in town either, I mean, you could be looking at, you know, I don't think West Street's paved all the way, is it? And you could look at finishing that out. And doing a project like this, I talked with Sid Arpin, who's an engineer, he's the engineer for the sidewalk project, you have to do a preliminary engineering report for a project like this, and in doing that, it looks at the whole town. And if you can show that you have more than one unpaid road in town, you actually make a better case for it than saying, oh, let's just build one street that's not paved. And Sid said he would lay out options, you know, you could, you could do a project that's straight, curve and gutter, which is obviously your most expensive option, your middle option is just paving it, leaving it flat and letting it run off in the ditches with the culverts. And I don't remember what the third one was, but it wasn't concrete like at all, it's asphalt type.
No, it was, yeah.
So they give you options, but again.
I honestly think, I'm willing to burst your bubble, but if you look at the long term, I think we're going to be lucky just to be able to keep our paved streets in town paved and not re-convert them to unpaved streets, because we have a huge infrastructure that's 100 years old and, and drastic need of repair and limited budget.
And with, okay, so would you, I mean, put sewer in that same category? I mean, do you guys foresee yourselves replacing sewer? Okay.
So, Septic and Store.
Okay, and that, that's the same process for CDBG funding, it has a different deadline. So if you want to prioritize sewer, we can go after that first. You obviously want to get that replaced before you put new street infrastructure on top of it.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's why I think council, I think we have it in the plans maybe hopefully to do some-
I think we're planning on having a project meeting.
Of what we want to do in the future.
And I'm more than willing to help with, you know, a sewer project, I mean-
But I still think it all takes the same type of-
It does, you have to be-
And I just think it's a waste of time now to do it.
That's fair.
For this year and then then turn around and say, well, now you're only 48% and we got to prove them wrong again.
Right, exactly.
I think you just waste a lot of time.
Especially with, with focusing on what we really need, there's going to be a lot more, um, when it comes to sewer and-
Right.
When our rates, or the rates we charge come into that calculus-
We are very-
You're applying for grants and such.
It's scary, the, the difference of numbers, I'll just put it that way.
What you just said, I mean, as far as looking into the future, what you just said is looking into a long-term strategic plan as far as our infrastructure and streets?
Right.
It's not just going to be the infrastr- we're doing a whole city-wide strategic plan.
Okay.
We will be.
We'll keep it on, on here, won't we? So we actually getting it done?
We can put it on a Saturday morning.
Multiple Saturday mornings, probably.
It's under fountain update.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, Teresa Miller, Circles.
Okay. Yes, I am Teresa Miller and I am the Circles coach, for those of you that are going, what the world is circles? Circles is a 20-week training program for people that are in poverty or just want to try to improve their lives. Participants are called circle leaders. We sit down and we study Philip DeVall's book, Getting Ahead and Just Getting By World. We investigate poverty and we look to participants as our source of information, because they're the ones that, you know, are living it, to better understand and train in poverty in our communities. We try to build relationships, trust, and we try to do this in a non-judgmental atmosphere. You know, in order to get out of poverty, participants have to learn how to function in a middle-class framework. Each class, both lower, middle and upper class, we have our own hidden rules and we have our own language, and in order to move from one class to another, you have to learn the language and the hidden rules. Hidden rules are the unspoken cues and habits of a group. There's now scientific evidence that living in poverty and living in continual toxic stress, it dumps cortisol, and when the brain is overloaded with cortisol, it can't take in new information and it can't problem solve. Kids that live in toxic stress react in one of three ways, fight, flight or freeze. The prefunal cortex doesn't develop in children that live in constant stress. The prefunal cortex controls a variety of complex behaviors, including planning, problem solving, and also greatly contributes to their personalities. The Circles program, it helps to calm the chaos in these participants' lives and it gives them a hand up rather than a hand out. Getting out of poverty has a ripple effect. Children raised in poverty will turn from being at risk to at promise. We started the Circles program, would have been, it's actually going to be two years in October. We graduated our first class last March and then just last night, we graduated our second class, there was nine that graduated in the first class and seven last night. You know, I, I always thought that poverty, when I heard that term, it was just strictly financial, and people that are in poverty lacked, lacked finances. I have learned that poverty is defined as the degree that a person is lacking resources. There's actually 11 different resources and the degree to which somebody is lacking these determines their poverty level. The first is financial, do you have money to, you know, pay for goods and services? The other is emotional, being able to control your emotional responses, especially in negative situations.[1776.25] There's the hidden rules I talked about, knowing unspoken rules and habits of poverty, middle class, and wealth. There's mental. You've gotta have cognitive abilities, gotta be able to read, write, and do math. Motivation and persistence, gotta have the energy and drive to plan, prepare, complete projects, jobs, make personal changes. There's the relationships and the role models. You know, you have to have frequent access to adults who are good role models, who socially act appropriately, are nurturing, and they don't engage in self-destructive behaviors. Social capital, having friends and family as resources, somebody you can turn to in time of an emergency. Then there's language, you have to have proper language, you have to be able to use vocabulary, negotiation skills in the workplace. There's physical, you gotta have physical health and ability. There's spiritual, believing in God, and then there's integrity and trust. Trust is linked to two different issues, predictability. Can I know with certainty that this person will do what they say they're gonna do? And two, safety. Am I gonna be safe with this person? So, that's what determines poverty, not just the finance piece. I'm gonna throw out a question, and I missed this. What's the number one cause of poverty? Anyone guess?
Education.
Birth. Eight hundred and eighty thousand born into poverty every year. Three hundred and twenty thousand are born into households earning twelve thousand annually. Twenty-five percent never escape poverty in their lifetime. Fifty-one percent will spend half their lifetime in poverty. Without interventions, without training, it's likely that poor kids are gonna grow up to be like their parents. So, just a couple more things. Like I said, our first class, we graduated nine, the second class, we just graduated last night. We already have three in our first class that are out of poverty. The, the average, on average, it takes two to five years for a family or individual to come out of poverty. So we feel real fortunate that we already have. That we have five that are currently have full-time employment after, you know, going through the Circles program. So we're seeing, we're seeing some real wins. And there are circles, and they're springing up all over. Youth Core Ministry is, out of Greensburg, is the group that we are under. There is a group there, then there's one at St. John, there's one at Stafford, Great Bend. Poisington is looking at starting one, Kingman just started, there's three or four towns out in western Kansas. So it's a real growing organization, it's life-changing. I guess I am coming to you, to City Council, if you have some kind of poverty initiative. When we first got started, Greensburg came, and there were gals that did all of our fundraising. This is growing by leaps and bounds. They don't have the staff or the manpower to do that funding for us. So they're asking each, you know, town to help, you know, come up with our own budget. So Stafford and St. John are working together on this. And so, I just wanted to bring that. Do you have any questions about? We will start another class in October. Maxville is also included. We do have one gal come over, and I'm gonna do a little better job of getting the word out to Maxville. So Maxville, St. John, and then Stafford has their own.
How often do you, do you meet?
We meet every Monday. The Methodist Church, we, we meet there at five-thirty. And we, we have had a lot of community sport, churches, individuals, different groups, prepare the meal. And so we eat from five-thirty to six-fifteen, and then from six-fifteen to seven-thirty, we sit down and discuss and study that, that book.
What's the follow-up after they graduate?
After graduation, then we bring in, good question, we bring in community people called allies. And then each person that has graduated is matched up with, we try, you know, if I can get enough community people, I match them with two people. And the first Monday of every night is called Ally Night. Our participants are taught to set goals. A lot of times when you live in poverty, you can't see past today, because you don't know what tomorrow's gonna hold. You're just hoping to get through today. So they really have trouble with long-term planning. And so we try to teach them how to set a thirty-day goal, what's that look like? And, and that's where the allies also come in. Now, you know, we're not there, and our allies, everybody is told, you're not gonna tell them what to do. That's, no, we're more support, suggesting, you know, cheerleader, and they learn to set economic, financial, or personal goals. And so every Monday, that's, and then the other time, we look to them, we brainstorm, what do you wanna know about? You know, you wanna know about budgeting, you wanna know about insurance. And we bring in community people. The first group wanted to do, we, we went through a book on emotional health. A lot of them had come from abusive homes, abusive marriages. And so we did a, a study on emotional health that was very good. So, yeah, they can stay in, like I said, it's a, for some people, it takes two to five years. We're fortunate that some have gotten out very quickly. And so, no, we continue to provide program, but we look to them, what do you need to know about?
Is your recidivism rate low or high?
Let's see, the nine that graduated, there were seven that continued. One moved, one moved out of town, and another one just didn't want to continue. This group, we graduated seven, and I believe five. One, there was a couple that were engaged. She is gonna graduate, and she's got a scholarship to go to Sterling. But, so, yeah, we've got-
So you're having fifty to seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
Success rate, do you think?
Yeah.
That's pretty good?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Lives, you know, you can lead a horse to water, not everybody, you know, but for the most part, we're seeing some real wins.
I don't, I don't know that this is a council issue. It's certainly an issue with the civic organizations, the National Medical Council, and, and the churches. But I don't know that this is something we can do for you, other than just our support. And I think, you know, when you show the success and rate that you're showing, I'm, I'm certainly in support of you. But I don't know as a governing organization, we can do much.
That's what I didn't know, I just thought-
Didn't we give them money once for a meal? Did somebody come in and ask?
Yeah, they did, but I don't think anyone ever-
I'd be open to that. I've been sponsoring a meal every so often, if that's legal at all.
I think it was probably, be right, maybe council members donated towards it instead of the city donating towards it.
Yeah, you guys are more than welcome to volunteer for everything.
I volunteer about eleven hours every two weeks.
What, what is, what's the, what's the number one thing that you need, Teresa, that you think's attainable for us? I mean, what, what-
Yeah, and that is, there are some groups or businesses that, you know, don't have the manpower, don't want to come out and prepare a meal, but, yeah, they, they donate money for, you know, so that, yeah. Because we always want to provide, you know, a lot of times-
It's a little motivation to get them there.
That, and a lot of times it's the only, we, we try and make a good meal, and a lot of times it's the only really good meal they have, and they look forward to that.
Do you do anything in the school? Because I'm sure we have children that go to school, I'm a very better part of this issue.
Yeah.
Do you have programs within the school?
Um, yeah, one, one of the gals that actually, her story is phenomenal. Rebecca Pancrat Lewis, she is now kinda head of the eleven learning centers. She was in poverty, her story's amazing. And she, she actually came to St. John, it's called Trauma Informed, it's just like I said. They've got evidence now, the kids that live in constant poverty, it's majorly messing with their ability to learn. And we, as schools, have got to make some changes. And she came and, and she spoke, and so I, I think our schools are addressing.
Yeah. And they are actually running our bingo for us, adjuvally, so I think it's like fifty-fifty. They, they'll walk away with fifty percent, and then the winning goes. So, we're trying to provide opportunities for them to raise some money.
I'd, I'd definitely be interested in just sponsoring a meal, you know, splitting it up. Do whatever, yeah, personally, yeah, personally, I mean, yeah.
I think we could do something in that way rather than, but not as a council.
Teresa, why don't you make, get, get like a menu put together, prices and everything, bring it to Aunt Jamie, and then she can bring it to council?
I thought you guys were doing this personally.
Well, we could, yeah, we are.
Just, just distribute the information.
Just distribute the information is all, so.
Just see what place.
Well, do you happen to know about what a meal roughly runs?
How many do you feed? Let's go easier.
Right, right. It depends on, when allies come, it can be around twenty-five, on a non-allie night, around fifteen. So, yeah, not a lot.
Put us down for a slot next year.
Okay.
Take care of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Any more discussion?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Four minutes?
Yeah. Okay, I have a-
Did you?
Okay, I have a motion of second. All in favor? For Carrie's five of-
Aren't we doing the minutes and the ordinance separately now?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll do just the minutes.
Yeah, we just did the minutes.
Oh, just John.
I can't hear you.
Okay, moving on to appropriation ordinance, number five dash seven dash nineteen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine and eighty-four cents, and petty cash of four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Do I have a motion?
I have some questions.
Sure.
Jamie, you have the answer for the-
The Elster? So somehow, I'm not sure, and I don't even think they know how they did it, but we weren't getting invoices from Elster, which is our monthly, our monthly almost subscription. Basically, it's around four hundred dollars for us to be able to link our automatic meters with the software to hook it all up. So, no, I did not get you a price per meter. When I called, yeah, she did not have that. There's a spreadsheet that she's gonna send me that I'm gonna continue to try to look at. I think the prices do change yearly, Jeff.
Yeah, I think it's based on usage, though, I believe.
Okay.
It's, it's a couple different things, it's on, it's on the meter reading end, but it's also on transactions that we do, turning meters on and off, that type of stuff. We chose to do that when we first put it in because of the difference in the cost of maintaining the server to do all that as to a third-party person doing it.
And I think it's, it's around, is it seven hundred dollars quarterly?
I believe that's right.
And then around eight thousand dollars for the annual fee. So that has not been getting to us for the past year, I think, for some reason.
Yeah, I just got it out of the blue, we all got it at the same time.
Yeah, Pam and, Pam and Jeff's email, I, I don't know, they couldn't even figure it out on their end, so.
So we are paid up until the end of the month, is that right?
Till Ju- July.
July, I think.
Because we just paid, we paid three quarters and the yearly.
Do we recover enough in our fees to justify this cost, then, is there anything we can do?
I don't, I can't speak on the fees and the rates. I, I don't know the cost difference from when you guys did that.
Is there some, is this something you think maybe we need to address at some point?
We can't do away with it.
Why, no, we can't do away with it.
Otherwise, you got a whole bunch of meters in this town that don't work.
We're not sure what it costs to take the system over. You know, we were kinda, we were kinda told this would probably be the better way, because it was all new to us at the time. But now, with the two girls we have in the office and their computer skills, it might be less expensive for us to do the transactions, because it's, it's turn-offs, turn-ons, move-ins, move-outs, non-payments, you know, everything like that. I mean, it all goes through that process, so.
Yes, I'm less concerned about how much it costs for a month, but how they forgot to send the bill for over a year, and then they want us to pay for it.
Yeah, it's, and it showed up the same day on mine as it did on everybody else's.
Pam brought them to Jeff, I-
We got them at the same time. It came on my email the same as it did up here.
Yeah.
And I asked Pam what it was, because I'd never seen it before, so.
Is that a hidden theme marshal, or did you guys know about it?
No, we knew about it, yeah. I mean, and we discussed it, we knew about it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it's a poor color.
Go see Daniel F. But there's no way to switch to anybody else?
No.
I mean, those guys are specifically got those means.
Yeah, they're the third-party billing for Elster.
You can, you can take it all over.
Yeah, you can do it yourself.
But I don't know what the equipment and the stuff like that's gonna come in.
It requires a server, a lot like what we use in here to do it, so.
I mean, that's something that you guys can keep in your minds when we're doing the strategic planning and, and going over. I don't know if any cost analysis was done, or, you know, what we're saving for not having to go remute. I, I wasn't here, so.
We'll discuss it later.
Okay, the other question I have, Jamie, I'm not gonna let you off the hook. Southland Veterinary Clinic does not pay fees in the town, they do not pay taxes or buy utilities.
Do you wanna do my job?
And I went back and looked at your previous supplier, who was about a hundred dollars annual cheaper. And I don't think this is something we should continue doing, honestly. We used to do two hundred animals a year, you're now down to what, forty-five or fifty?
Seventy-five, I think we did.
Seventy-five was what I did a year ago for less money.
Two years ago.
So I don't know that it's the citizens of this community's responsibility to vaccinate animals for people.
I tried to get rid of this two years ago, so you have your-
I think it's something we need to address.
You have your battle with it.
Think we need to get away, quit doing it. Because we used to do, when we first started doing that, there was a rate, endemic rabies issue in town.
But, I mean, those statistics are correct, you went from two hundred to forty-some?
No.
No, no, I initially started that, we did over two hundred, it was an all-day clinic. That's forty years ago, we started probably forty-two.
I would just say, Jamie, next year, maybe we'll open up a bid, and we decide then, maybe a month before.
And I hope you guys volunteer times.
I honestly think that if you own a pet, you should pay for your own, your pet vaccination.
I think so, too.
That's what I tried to communicate the last time I brought it up.
I own three dogs, I pay for all mine.
Can we bring it up in new business today?
We have a while to discuss it, but I think we need to.
Okay.
I'll put it on my work calendar.
We bring it up in new business today, we can settle it now.
Are you gonna sustain from voting with your personal conflict?
I'll sustain. I'll, I'll voice my opinion.
This is a fun meeting.
You guys should have studied it.
Hey, I made the motion to approve it.
I think the people that get come to, some of the people have come to bring their animals, they can't afford it, they aren't gonna do it regardless. So if you don't have it, they're not gonna get their rabies shots every year. They become a problem if you let it slide, I don't know.
What do you guys charge it? What do you, somebody pays, the person that comes in pays?
Three dollars.
They pay for the city dog.
Three dollars if it's-
So it's for just the dog pet?
They pay for the dog pet.
And then the city pays?
Would you let me finish, please?
And then they pay for the?
Do you want my answer? Three dollars for spayed or neutered, five dollars for intact.
So the city pays for the rabies shot, it's a-
Pays for rabies vaccination and a rabies rate, give it a better name.
I'm not, I'm not for getting rid of it. It's very minimal money for a lot of things.
I'm not, I'm not for getting rid of it. It's very minimal money for a lot of things. We waste money on other issues in my opinion.
Next year, I'd say.
And it's preventative.
No one will have a meeting.
Okay, so let's, let's second the appropriation ordinance and let's move on.
I think so. Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five oh. Okay, moving on to department heads, committee reports. Grant Administrator Lisa Cornwell, anything from her?
No, at this time.
Okay. Swimming pool manager Stephanie Smith, need an executive session to hire a lifeguard?
Do we, we need an executive session for that, John?
Are they employees? I'm assuming we're gonna talk about.
Several of them.
Yes, several.
Okay, how long do you need? Ten minutes, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Should we get up and move to the hallway?
Is it easier?
It might be easier.
Might be easier.
That's what I'm saying. Would it be easier for us?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Five minutes.
Five minutes for possible hire.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, all opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, we will resume at, uh, seven fifty-seven.
All right, we're gonna technically call one here.
Call this meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to hire Allison Smith as the assistant manager along with Melissa Williamson, Shayla Garcia, Bree Meyer, Katie Burke as returning lifeguards and new lifeguards. Hunter Smith, Adrian Adami, Darby Smith, Peyton Meyer, Colin Holling, Tanner Holling, and Ashley Behrens.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, moving on. Police chief, Chief Adams.
I think there's the, we have to do the motion to set the pay.
What's kidding?
There's the motion to set the pay too.
I thought we set the pay last year.
I, I don't know.
Just make sure to make the motion. Last year, we set the pay.
Yeah.
You want me to yell? You want me to yell?
Because she went the other direction.
Yeah, new people make minimum wage.
All are done.
The returnings make a dollar.
Just yell, holler.
Stephanie.
Stephanie!
He's gotta get him on camera.
That's funny.
I was gonna say, I thought you said all that last year though.
That's what I thought.
I, I think you still have to make a motion to include what you're gonna pay though.
What is like seven twenty-five?
Well, we don't need her in here. We'll just do it. She's already aware.
So do we just have to make a motion that we're gonna pay the new hires minimum wage?
Yeah, I mean, I would just include everybody though, just, because you're giving Jamie a priority to pay them, so.
I thought we said, I thought we said it last year.
I don't know what that came on.
We settled on a certain amount for.
She don't know any better.
Manager, assistant manager, returning lifeguards, and minimum wage for new lifeguards is what we set last year.
Seven twenty-five and eight and a quarter.
Yes, and then whatever we set as per salary.
The manager and the assistant manager.
Around the assistant manager. I mean, because we said all that last year and said that's how it's gonna be, we're gonna raise a minimum more than that.
Okay, all right. That's fine. I mean, I.
Do you wish to give a second? I'm in the motion to include those fees.
How about we just do a motion that they are hired for this season, which you already done. They've been hired. Then they just make a motion that they'd be paid the rate that council has already agreed to, the standard rate for whatever the position is.
Okay, so I make a motion to pay the lifeguards and the assistant manager the standard rate that we agreed upon last year.
Second. Oh, motion and a second. All in favor? Five oh. Motion carries. All right. Chief.
Yes, sir. Can you, first I have two things. One, first, I'd like to introduce our new officer, Toy Perez, just started with us basically yesterday. Um, she's from Larnard, so, um, we'll be, she'll be in the slot schedule for after January, going to the academy, but she is on standby if something was to come up earlier. But I just wanted to introduce her to the council after, when I was gone, when the, uh, when the hiring happened, so at the chief's conference, I just wanted to, wanted to bring her in and introduce her and that way you guys could see her. And, uh, she just got started with us and, and I got some pretty high hopes. She was, I think she's gonna do as well, so we'll, uh, we'll work with her and, uh, we'll get her out on the street soon. So.
We're welcome and nice to have you.
Welcome to the city, sir, John.
The, the thing I brought, I, I gotta come to you guys and ask for is, um, you know, it's been a month and a half now that I've been the chief and, and we're catching up and I've, I've gone through most all of everything up there for the most part. There's still a lot to go through, but everything is outdated, everything is antiquated, and it's just not any good. Um, as we're coming along, it's gonna take us a while to get where we need to be, but then by the time we get to where we need to be, we're still gonna be behind, but I just, I've gotta try my best. So tonight, I'm just asking on radar units for the, for the cars. Uh, both radar units in the Charger and in the Dodge Ram are seventeen years old this August. Um, and that's old. They, neither one of them work. Um, I've actually instructed the officers that they're not to use the radars anymore because they're unreliable, which can cause us a problem in court because they haven't worked for a while. Nobody said anything, nobody's done anything, and the problem is, is that if we continue to use them, we can start getting into some, some legal trouble with people coming after the city and having to pay back money or anything like that. So, um, basically, I, twenty years in law enforcement, I've worked with both radar units. Um, I have a preference. It isn't the one that we have. As far as our old radar units, um, just looking at both of them will cost us a hundred and fifty dollars at minimum, um, just for them to look at them and tell us whether or not they can even fix them. Um, but then once they fix them, it's not guaranteed how long they're gonna last because they're old. They, they actually been up to the Highway Patrol Academy, the one in the KHP Academy in Salina, the radar unit that they have in their museum is actually newer than the ones that we have in our car. So it, it just needs to be upgraded and replaced. Um, it's gonna cost a minimum of eleven hundred and fifty dollars to fix both radar units. Um, and that's if there's not much wrong. And again, like I said, if they can even fix them. So, uh, at the chief's conference, uh, I visited with custom, and that's what we have in the cars now are custom Eagle radar units. Uh, back in the day, they, they were a decent radar unit. Um, Stalker, I've used both. Stalker radar units are by far better, um, more, better reliability. Um, I've talked to a lot of other people that have used them. They say the same thing that, that I have discovered in, in the use of them. High-end, which we don't need, um, is fifty-seven, almost fifty-eight hundred dollars for two radar units at high-end. Um, and we don't need that. The, the low end that the previous chief was looking at, um, was, uh, forty, forty-five hundred dollars for the, or no, I'm sorry, thirty-one ninety for those. I don't suggest those. They're not, they're not great for one. We already have our console, especially in the Charger. They don't have detachable faces on there so that we can put them where we need them and not to be, it's a big blocky head. Um, that's just, you know, it's probably three and a half, three-half inches tall, uh, if not maybe four. I just don't, I'm, I'm not a fan of those. But for the Stalker duels, for two of them, and that's both front and rear radar antennas, the boxes, all the cables, the remotes, the tuning forks and everything, and that's on all of these, is, uh, forty-five hundred and ninety-two dollars. As far as the custom Eagles, for basically the same thing that we have in there now, um, and it almost looks identical, almost like they're refurbished, and I, I just, I'm not happy with those. They're thirty-one forty-six for two of them, and the high-end Eagle threes that they have are fifty-five hundred and sixteen. I myself, I'm asking for the duels at forty-five ninety-two, and that's for, uh, for both of them complete. That's with all the cables, um, the, uh, remotes to them, two antennas per car, your, uh, your face module and the base module. And then, uh, both of them do come with a thirty-six month warranty, uh, on the radar units themselves too. So to get them ordered, I was kinda hoping I was gonna be able to do this last time, get stuff done. It takes about thirty days for them to come in. I was really hoping to, uh, get them in before I left, uh, to go back to Iraq, um, because I wanted the Sheriff's Department to help. Uh, Tom over there has helped put them in. I wanted to, uh, I mean, I've never installed them, so we, uh, they were gonna help us out whenever they come in. So I just wanna, I wanted to try and get them in. I can ask for a rush if you guys approve it and see if I can't get it here in maybe three weeks and we can get them in the car. But, um, both units, uh, one of them doesn't have sound. The other one that's in the Charger turns on sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. You can't switch modes to whether you're on the front antenna, the rear antenna. Uh, the remote doesn't work. Um, they're just, they're, they're done. So that's, that's what I'm asking for tonight to, uh, to upgrade the radar units.
Al, most members in my family would prefer that if you had an inoperative unit because most of them have gotten high-speed driving awards and you won't write enough tickets to pay for one of them, let alone two.
No, but, you know, it's, uh, they, they're a necessary tool and, and they really are. I mean, they're, um, we're not, we're not trying to generate money by writing tickets and bringing, you know, and making that a, a revenue into the city, but they are a necessary piece of equipment. We have to, we, you know, we have to have them in there. Um, the, uh, the problem with handhelds are, uh, they're cheap, but now the way they're built, you bang them around, uh, they sit in the seat, you turn the corner, they, they fly off. Uh, they're, they can get to be pretty unreliable and you have to do a lot more of the, um, inspections of them. And what I'm talking about inspections is, is having them recertified because they do get jostled around quite a bit.
So you can send some in and have them refurbished for how much? A hundred and some dollars a piece?
No, no, no.
That would be minimum?
At the minimum, they can just look at them and tell you if they can fix them. Um, and then if they fix them, now you don't have a guarantee on them because they are seventeen years old, which means all the other pieces in it are seventeen years old. So if you, you can spend the money and fix it, and then if something else goes out on it, because it's old, you send it back in. It's another hundred and fifty to check them for them to tell you if they can fix it, and then it's to fix whatever parts, um, that that is. So, I mean, the LEDs, everything, you know, anything can go out at any time on it, um, just because they are antiquated.
Was it, was it a minimum of eleven fifty to fix each one?
No, no, no. I'm just guessing. Uh, Tom's, Tom's, we have no idea what it's gonna cost. Tom, the Sheriff's Department radar they sent in had, I, I think it was a sound problem that it had with it. Um, the sound wasn't working, and it was almost five hundred dollars after they paid the, hey, we're gonna look at it and, and tell you. So I figure with, between, we don't have sound on it, they don't change directions on them, uh, you know, they're not working properly. When you turn them off and on, when you're hitting the power button, uh, sometimes you can tap the power button to come on. Sometimes you gotta hold it and wiggle the button side to side, um, and then it'll come on. It's just, they're never consistent on what the problem is. It's just everything's just kinda going. But like I said, August twenty-fourth, uh, when I called Star, or Custom, August twenty-fourth of two thousand and two was when they were bought. So, I mean, they've had their life of what they, what they spent out of them, um, when they got them, but it's, uh, it's definitely time to, uh, to look at an upgrade and, and replacing them. I don't want the department to look like we, uh, we're trying to generate revenue for the city. That's, that's not what our job is. But you have school zone, you have different things like that. You have no radar to run. You have nothing to do for the school zones, um, you know, trying to run through. And, and that's a frustrating thing when people start complaining, well, the cars are speeding through here. All right, well, we don't have, we don't have a working radar unit, so we.
It's kind of a necessity to buy a ticket. You can't tell them how fast they're going to that radar gun.
Right, right. You have the basic speed rule in law.
And you don't use a stopwatch anymore.
But that's very hard in court that you're always gonna go when they're, you know, especially if you don't have officers experienced in working traffic. They, uh, you know, they're gonna have a hard time showing a track record in court of saying for the basic speed rule to, uh, to get that to go in court to a, to an attorney. So.
This price is for the front and back on those vehicles, right?
Yeah, each unit has the, the, the face display, and then it has a, a main box that then will detach and it goes elsewhere in the car so that all you have to do is mount the display. And that's for the cable going from the main box to the display head, but then it'll have a front and a rear antenna on it.
What, what does it really, or what do you mean, like a top end versus a low end? What is that? I mean, the different features or?
All the, all the games. You know, we don't need the one, this, the Stalker duel is a very good.
I mean, we're in Midland Road.
Right. It's a very good mid-range, you know. Highway Patrol, um, you know, now they'll start going to a different band because they can get further. Well, we don't run the highway. We don't need something that reaches out, you know, a mile down the road, which is your high end, and that's why they cost more. They're just, they put different bands in them. Um, so I, I'm looking at our middle of the road that we need for, you know, a couple blocks, you know, six blocks down the road, not, not the highway, you know.
Do you have it in your budget?
Do we have it in the budget? No. Um, it, it would have to come out of the, the equipment. I mean, our budget, you know, as I look at it, unfortunately, the bad thing about the budget is, is, is it's set where it is. It's ten thousand dollars less this year than what it was in two thousand and eighteen for the PD, but then the former chief has, you know, he has seen the direction he was wanting to take it and he bought stuff and he, he took money out of different items to pay for rifles and different stuff like that. Um, so now I'm just left, I've gotten some bills in after he's left, trying to figure out where to take that money out. Um, that was one reason with, as far as the, um, the, uh, paying for the vaccinations, that also comes out of my budget. Um, so I have, you know, several hundred dollars to figure out where that's coming out of too, so.
But you have money somewhere.
I have money, yes. It's just.
To cover for.
Yeah, I don't have it in my line item for, for equipment on that specifically.
But your overall budget, you have it.
You know, which is something that I look in, you know, to put a little bit in each time, and then, you know, if we can get another fifteen years out of a radar unit down the road, then we have saved up. The unfortunate part is, is I just can't explain how antiquated our equipment is and, and it wasn't taken care of. And that's one thing that I am changing in our department is taking care of the equipment to make it last longer. Um.
You'll be able to buy a lot more stuff if you take care of it. I can assure you of that.
Well, and you may not even have to buy so much because when you take care of it, it lasts longer. Um, so that's kinda where I'm at, but I'm, I'm stuck in the rock and the hard place of trying to get going and get stuff to where we're actually a, a functioning department that's good.
You got, I mean, because it's this early in the year and you're saying that things have been spent out of line items, you didn't expect, do you, do you have any other big expenditures you plan on for the rest of the year?
No, no. This, this really, I, I was pretty on course with the, the direction I wanted to go and the little things that we just needed throughout the year and we, and we were doing okay. It's just that finally I'd had enough of the radars and, you know, I, I let it limp that the truck was working. Uh, the Charger was, and I haven't even turned it on anymore. Um, I don't get in it and turn it off. But then the officers came and said, okay, yeah, it's, it's finally not working like it's supposed to be either. So, um, that was why this just came as a surprise to, I had looked at it for next year's budget of actually trying to do it once I found out they were seventeen years old. Um, and then I've tried to, to see, but they, they're not, you know, they're not good now. Um, we cannot stop a car, uh, with those radar units. It's, that's bad.
What's the, what's the lower end price?
How much?
For the, for a Stalker, uh, the lower end price is thirty-one ninety.
Okay.
Um, for the Patrol. And like I said, the Patrol, um, you know, it, it, it is what you get and you, and you pay for, and I, and I understand that, you know, look and trust me. Um, the girls down here know I'm a, I'm a, I'm really bad with the budget. I'm, I'm very penny-driven on my budget, where every single penny's going on there. Um, and I wouldn't ask for the Stalker duel if I didn't think it wasn't the right radar because I, I am working hard to even finish this year, and I have a full year with this budget to make sure that I stay within my budgets, um, of my line items, you know, that I didn't ask for, um, and it wasn't towards my vision, but I'm still, still doing everything to stay in that. So, but, yeah, I, I didn't like them and I talked to them. So, but, yeah, I, I didn't like them and I talked to them. Um, I've talked to stalker and, and I've looked them up and, and read on them. And they're okay, uh, but they won't work with our consoles. So, right now, like, the charger, you already have a limited view in the charger, um, with that small windshield and the high dash. So, having that face plate down on the bottom, and, and those are very hard to find it, it's down in the console. So, we already have a hole that's already been pre-made into our center console with the radios and everything, so that it's down there. The truck, we're not taking up a big splotch in the windshield, because it's mounted on the dash on a lower part in the center on the pickup, too. So, it's not much higher than the dash on that. It, it basically, that other one is like a huge GPS unit. It's just gonna be sitting there in the, in the window. So, and, and it doesn't have a detachable face, so there's, it's all just right there in one box.
Sounds like a necessity to me.
We'll make a motion.
Motion to approve Alan buying the radar guns for four thousand five hundred ninety-two.
For both units, yeah, that's for two of them.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Jim?
All those opposed?
I did, but I wanna get a jail, get out of jail free card.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
They luck it all night.
Yeah, don't be speedy.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, they'll be in in the morning.
I think that was bribery on the camera.
Okay, moving ahead.
Hold on. Alan, do you happen to know the cost to rush it, so you could help?
No, it's not, it's not a cost to rush it. It's when you, so I'll be in here first thing in the morning and I will call them. The problem is, is that when you put your order in, then they make it, um, and then they'll ship it out. There's no extra cost on the rush, it's just them building the unit. But I will talk to them and see. Because she told me they might be able to rush it just a little bit more and get it built, so...
I was just gonna say if you needed a little extra?
Yeah, no, no, there was no extra fee for that, just, just simply the build contract.
Alright, okay, any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
You go.
Okay, moving on. Fire Chief, Chief Sanders.
I don't have anything.
Alright. City Clerk, Jamie.
I don't have anything yet.
What, you don't have none? Oh, well, that's good. That's a good thing. Alright, City Superintendent, Jeff.
Um, not really a lot. I think some of you have probably seen that we've excavated the corner in nineteen ninety. We, uh, went to finish up the little project we started last winter and we broke a tee in the process. And so, we've got everybody back on, but we're waiting on some parts. It probably is gonna set and wait until after the pool's repaired and the power plant stuff's done and that. So, it may sit there a little while. We don't know for sure how long it's gonna take to get that tee. Those tees are about ninety years old. They don't make them that way anymore. So, if you can't find one in stock somewhere, you kinda gotta build pieces to make them fit. And this is a, this is what we call a cross, it goes four directions. And so, uh, it may stay open for a little while, but, uh, we'll keep an eye on it, make sure it's lit up while we got it that way. And as soon as we can get back on it, we will. Uh, another thing, Mel resigned Monday morning. Uh, we kinda knew it was coming. He'd been slipping since he came back and he just felt like it was better for us and better for him if he went ahead and parted ways, so... Other than the stuff we're gonna talk about down the road here with the fountain and that stuff, well, I think that's all I've got for right now.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. City Attorney, John.
Uh, nothing reported.
Okay. Moving on to old business, lift station.
Nothing there.
Nothing there. Sewer pond bid.
Grazing for sheep. Jamie's got that one, I think. I think we only got one bid, did we?
Yeah, it was...
I don't know what it was for sure, but we only had one person that bid that...
We had someone call today.
Greys out there, so...
Tried to make a bid, but...
And it was the same guy that's rented it in the past, Steve Frink. I can't tell you what the bid is.
I have a bid here for four hundred and thirteen dollars to Grace of Castor, by Steve Frink.
Let me accept the bid.
Second.
Pretty high rate per acre.
That's something you've been getting along good with, Jeff, as far as relations?
Yeah, you know, I've had a discussion with him and I'll discuss it with him again. You know, last year, the grass kinda went backwards a couple of times and he wanted us to water it maybe a little more often than we wanted to. We're, we're kinda stuck by, you know, the amount of, uh, retention time we have in those ponds. And so, when it starts, the pond gets lower than what it should, we have to stop watering, no matter what, the grass. So, uh, I want him to understand, and we've visited about a little bit, that when it comes to time that we can't water it, if he has to pull them, he has to pull them, so, anyway.
Alright, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay, moving on to new business, fountain update.
You wanna do that, Jamie? You've got the stuff, don't you?
You guys got a letter in your packet. That gave you an update on where we were from Friday. David has since then went to Great Bend, uh, the top of the fountain. Once they soft blasted it, um, looked a little bit more interesting than originally thought. The, the welding shop that we took it to at the beginning didn't even wanna touch it. Um, so, South Two Eighty-One has it right now. It is going to cost a little bit more than originally planned. We think no more than three thousand.
He said no more than three thousand. What he said was that they're gonna use an epoxy on there. When that, when that cherub and that duck were made on the top of that fountain, they were made in pieces. And they were leaded together. It's not one full body like you see. It's, it's pieces from the top to the bottom. Around the cherub's neck and around the base of the duck's neck were cracked fairly severely. Um, we took it to Scott's Welding to have them look at it, they wouldn't touch it. Uh, like I say, as far as we know, it's been leaded together. But, but Darren seems pretty confident he has a, a two-part epoxy that they wanna put on it that will go ahead and soft blast and will adhere the powder coat, too, when they do it. Um, another thing he's worried about is there's a couple of pedals on there. Those pedals are cast iron and they've got some cracks in them, but he's gonna do what he can. He thinks he can make it to where it, uh, when it gets done, it should look like a shiny, brand-new bathtub, is what it should look like. It should have that color of a gloss to it. Uh, it'll be the same color basically as what it is, an ivory. So, um, as far as the bowl, um, I don't know whether Jamie did, uh, David met with, with Chris Mansell. And we've gotten a couple of outside bids from people. We called, we called Ross's brother-in-law, in fact, and they, it was too small of a job for what they wanted to do. And they felt like if they did it, it'd be ten to fourteen weeks out before they'd even really be interested. So, what we've come to at this point in time is Chris Mansell thinks he can pour it. He's gonna study it a little closer. It's probably gonna cost somewhere in the range of twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars to do the bowl. So, at this point, right now, with the figures that we've got, we think we're underneath the threshold that the council has allowed us. But the bowl, it will not be done for, uh, Jubilee. But we're gonna try and get the base poured back in around it to where we can set the fountain back. Provided everything's done. And, uh, at least show people, and then we wanna do some signings to explain to people at the point where we're at. And, uh, you know, that we, we've all taken a lot of pride in this. And, and, and we want it to last through my guys' grandkids. You know, we want it to last another hundred years. That, the wall below the sidewalk level on that fountain was twenty-four inches deep. And it was twelve inches wide. And the base was about fifteen inches deep. So, when they did it the first time, they intended for it to stay. But at this point, it's been broke out, we're gonna do a little plumbing. We redid the plumbing on it about, um, oh, mid to late nineties, I can't remember if I'm sure. And made it from what it ran over on the overflow into a circulating-type fountain, so that we quit wasting water. So, we're gonna do a little bit of plumbing work while we got it open. And hopefully, we'll get a, a bottom poured back in and get the fountain set by Jubilee, so... Anyway, um, you know, we've, uh, they were so scared about hauling the cherub up there that they put him in the front seat of the pickup and bailed him in. So, uh, they've taken a lot of pride in doing it. So, anyway, that's kinda where we're at at this point. Looks like it could be August before we pour the bowl, though. Depends on Chris's schedule, so...
He said you got, Chris Mansell here is local.
Yes.
You said, do you, do you get other bids for people to use the same forms?
The only two, the only two prices that we really got, one guy out of Wichita, he wanted twenty-five thousand just to build the forms. Uh, it's kinda one of those projects not everybody wants to tackle, you know, with it being round. You know, Jim and I and Marshall, we stood over and talked about it, you know, quite a little while in length the other day. And, and there was a suggestion brought up that we change the shape of it. But I think, uh, that people expect it to go back and look like it did, so...
But, like, with having Chris Mansell do it, I mean, what I understand is that a company is gonna build the forms, the molds?
Now, that I can't tell you. I haven't talked to Chris today. David met with him this morning, I was kinda tied up at the plant, so I never, I didn't visit with him. But, um, I will have a full report for you next time as to where we're headed, because by then, we'll kinda know.
The other, the one company in Wichita wanted just twenty-five thousand.
For the forms, just for the forms, not, not to pour it, nothing.
If Chris can pour it for twenty, twenty-some, I mean, I just would, would get bids from somebody else if we can have the molds, just like we would...
I don't think he's gonna use a mold. I think he's gonna build, I think he's gonna build the forms in place, is what I think. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think he intends on going outside for a mold at all. I, and, and you know, the thing about using somebody here locally, too, is the fact that he has to drive by and look at it every day.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we're gonna get the best quality job that we can get, because he wants his kids and his grandkids to enjoy it, too, just like we have, so... I got a lot of faith in him doing it right. But I'll visit with him some more and I'll have a little better answer for you next time. But, but that's what, that's the direction we're gonna head, I think, so... So, we don't delay it any longer, so...
I mean, I just, I put it out there that, you know, we, from the last meeting, we've been at three weeks and I was expecting to get like the full-blown-out answers and the plan out today. This isn't a project that I wanna see drug out, and I'm sure you know that.
Oh, no.
Throughout the summer, we need a...
I don't think any of us wanna drug out. But, you know, by doing it this way, too, we have to kinda go by the schedule. It's just like you working, you know, you're not gonna put somebody in front of five people you've already got, so... And we wouldn't expect him to do it either. You know, I, I think we'll have it narrowed down a little bit more next time. But, but we'll still, we'll owe Trent some money for what we've done so far, too. But I think we're still in the ballpark of what you allowed us to spend, so...
Okay.
But hopefully, we can get the fountain back up and, and let people know. And you know, uh, in here in the office, we talked to a lot of people in a day's time. And we've visited a lot of the older people.
I get a lot of calls.
You know, yeah, and, and I have, too. I mean, I've been caught on the street about it, but, but we wanna do it right. And we only wanna do it once. And we don't wanna hurry up and have it throwed together and in two years be tearing it apart again. Because the fountain won't stand it. I mean, it just will not stand it, so...
As far as putting it back together, we are doing, I mean, I, I, my expectations were the new, I mean, footing? Are we doing the footing?
Oh, we'll do as much as, yeah, everything's new, it's all clear out there. There's no concrete in there.
Okay, and then the plumbing all?
Yep, everything, you betcha, yeah. Yeah, we want it to last another hundred years.
So, by Jubilee, you're thinking we'll have the fountain up itself?
I just, the only, the only way that I'll do it is that we know it's protected. We don't want anybody climbing on it, you know, it's very fragile. So, um, we'll try and, I'll discuss that with Dave a little more about how we can do something that looks presentable, but keep people like, Jamie says no.
The fountain is not going to be on...
She said it won't be up?
No, I just wanna say, I would like to see the fountain and if we can, have the floor down.
Well, we'll just have to see, you know, what we can do. I can't promise you anything, because I don't know.
The fountain is not gonna be on Jubilee. But there's gonna be a flat surface there, so it's not in anyone's way. But the fountain will not be up for Jubilee.
There you go.
You have any idea what, uh, we owe Trent Lee?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I just want it noted, my brother-in-law's never been called, because I've never gave anybody his number.
Well, he, we called his company or company he worked for.
Yeah, no.
Or Trent did.
Wait, no, afraid, no.
No?
We've done some, I've done some referrals, just because the last time, I mean, my biggest frustration on the whole thing is we knew we had a problem last year. I had multiple people call me that said, we were told last year the fountain was barely operable for Jubilee and it was empty half the last season. I don't know if that's right or not. But, my biggest thing is our last meeting, we discussed that we're gonna go to Georgia to finish the fountain. And then we hired Trent Salee Masonry to do, I don't know what. And then now, we're going to our nice local concrete man that I think we should've went to right away. I mean, I'm not trying to point fingers, but I just don't think it's been handled properly at all and the timing's terrible. And I don't know what Trent's gained us. I, I don't know what Trent's position was originally, when I think we could've called Chris Mansell to begin with and, and tried to get an epoxy and stand in order.
I think the biggest thing about not calling Chris first was the fact that Trent had the time, Chris didn't. Was probably the big thing. At the time, we thought we could get it repaired. And that was, that was the intention was to repair it.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and maybe it wasn't him, but the way I understand it was, they talked to somebody in Wichita.
Yeah. Oh, I gave three or four referrals after I, I mean...
Evidently, that, that he said it was really too small of a job for what they wanted.
Right, right.
And so, that's where that kinda ended, right there.
Yeah.
So, that's all I can tell you, right on the hand, Ross.
That's for sure, right.
So, anyway.
I would just say if, if, uh, our guys can do some of the work over there, you know, and not, maybe hire someone to do stuff.
Sure, sure.
You know, I see three Mason, or three Salee Masonry guys over there, you know? When they're helping tear out some concrete that, or just tearing concrete out. I mean, can we not just do that?
I think at the time, I think he was just curious about how deep that was to whether it was something he even wanted to tackle. And then when we decided how deep it was, we went after that jackhammer and brat to take it out. Because it just really wasn't something he wanted to patchwork back in.
Alright. I, I, it just concerns me, you know, we're, we're hiring...
I wasn't up here for a lot of it, I can't tell you. I kinda left that with David. We had some power plant stuff that had to be done by the end of the month and we generate, so...
I know, Jeff.
You know, I kinda, I kinda left it with him and I hope that it was done, you know, satisfactory. And I, I'm sure, um, you know, that we could beat this around for a week and, 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 and maybe not everybody would be happy with it. But I felt like that he could take care of it. And I had some other things that were pressing down there that I really needed to get done. And so, I left it with him with hopes that that's the way it would turn out. So, I apologize, you know, that's as far as I can go, I'm sorry. So...
Any other questions?
It appears to have me tangled more than one project that took five times as long and cost ten times as much in my life. And if you looked at the concrete that came out of that, a lot of it was made with sand and dirt. It was very fragile when it came out. I think going back with Chris, any of our good contractors locally, it'll be made with quality contract and rock and good clean sand, not dirty sand.
Yeah.
They ran into a project that if you've ever taken, lived in one of these, it was a lot bigger than I think anybody imagined. You know, you got the cap came off of that thing and one, you know...
I don't think there was anybody standing around if you wanna go that far. I think everybody had a job, you know?
I think everybody did really put in a heck of a lot of effort on that. And I've talked to the city employees other than Jeff, and I think they're taking a lot of pride in this project. And I don't really think they need to be micromanaged by any of us at this table.
I can tell you that Pam grows those flowers that are in there by the seed at her house. So, for some of the comments that have been happening over the past couple of weeks, it's really unneeded. Because there's a lot more work that goes into all of that than anyone even knows.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work for that, for the city employees on that project. And I, I'm, I think they've done a great job. I think we're lucky enough to agree.
I think the only thing I'm concerned about is if thirty thousand doesn't cover fixing the fountain. I would like to have an update so we can approve to spend more money.
I'll be glad to.
It needs to be done right.
I'm gonna try and daily, yeah, and worry about that.
Them doing their job. We told them what we wanted, what we expect out of them. And I'm leaving it with them to do the right thing.
And Jeff and I met this afternoon to discuss the price, to see if we needed to request more or not. I've attempted to start the twenty-nineteen restoration project. We've already actually received a donation. I've had several phone calls about donations. We're gonna, I mean, we're doing it right. It's not gonna be slap it together and be done with it, it's...
I think we take our time and do it right. And we just really think that's what needs to be done.
And that's what we're doing.
You've got some artistic people, both in the city staff and elsewhere in the community. that just can make it, make, really make into something unique.
I don't disagree with what's needed done, I'm just unhappy with the time limit, you know, like, I think we're, we, we approached it a bit wrong.
We, we had asked last year, and he said it would be the first of this year before he could get to it.
April's the fourth month in the year.
He still gave us a timeline, and he thought at that time he could go in and repair it. There's a difference of tearing into something and just repairing it and it crumbling and falling apart.
And that's the way we started, with, with full intentions of repairing it.
And I don't, I don't.
When I left the last council meeting, I thought I was going to walk over there and find a hole and whatever, and I went over there, and I think the way it should have been represented is, it's half demolished, we're going to finish demolishing it, and we're going to start over. I mean, I was totally caught off guard when I went over there. That's, I mean, knocking the whole top off and jackhammering out, out half the wall, and then, well, we can't fix it, boy, that's a deal now. I mean, that's a real.
It was about what I expected when I walked over there.
Yeah, it wasn't what I was expecting.
It was about what I expected, but I walked over and looked at the fountain and done.
Well, we're, we're at the, the point right now where it is what it is, and we just move forward with everything right now, and just need to be updated. If there's any more money needed, then they need to bring it to council, so. Okay, do we have any more discussion on this? Okay, moving forward. CIC contract.
I need permission from Mark to sign the contract for our computer software that we use.
What's that cost us a year?
Mm-hmm. Let me get some page here. This total is three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars.
That's per year?
Mm-hmm. I'm pretty sure.
So do we need to approve these contracts? Is that yearly contract?
Mm-hmm.
I'd make a motion to approve the yearly contract for CIC of three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Motion carries. Five oh. Four, excuse me, sorry. Okay, what do I need to sign, Jamie?
We can do it tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. All right, moving on. Charter ordinance nineteen.
Is there a reason that chief of police is being highlighted as not being under your auspices?
Yeah, that was my addition. The only reason is because of the issues, like, the repeated hiring of chief of police in the last two years, I didn't know if that was something we wanted to give her the power that also was highlighted, or whether, it was just a suggestion.
Can't she do a worse job than the councils, Dad? For the last two years, we've, we've had plenty of battles.
They got it right.
They got it right this time, finally.
You're not getting speaker.
I thought that's what, that's what we're saying. Get them in trouble after.
The only conflict exists in the, uh, really in the municipal judge. City attorney has to be left out of it, but you can even put the city attorney.
So she could fire you?
She could fire and fire me.
Well, subject to the fact that I'd have to be removed.
Well, you're right, she couldn't, because I could only be.
I was going to say, aren't you appointed, you and the?
Yeah, five years ago.
Yeah, are appointed.
Oh, yeah. That's the only addition, other than what we previously talked about with the chief of police.
So are you saying we don't include the chief of police, or we do include?
The, the only reason why I, I did not give her the power was because of the past history of the city council. I just, that was my suggestion, you can do whatever you want with it.
I don't have a problem with the chief being on there.
It's, it's kind, it's kind of one of those positions that require more.
Yeah, unbiased.
Well, and, and.
Lack of conflict.
More review and more background checks.
Okay, what's council think?
I kind of skimmed through it for me.
Are you not, you're still going to, the police department is still going to be under your auspices, you'll just not have the power to, to.
Hire or fire?
Hire or fire the chief independently, but it's still going to be under the auspices of the administrator, am I correct? Is that everybody's understanding the police department is going to be under her auspices?
She still has to get confirmation for.
For hiring or firing the chief.
Of any department.
Yes.
But he's just, he's just like the mayor's, I mean, the mayor's duty was to, he can suspend, but you can't fire unless.
And, and that's why the repeal statutes are related to the powers of the mayor, fifteen two oh four, two oh nine, three oh one. Well, not repeal, I'm sorry, it's empty. This ordinance does not repeal any ordinance in conflict, which makes me a bit nervous, but you guys had not exactly said you wanted to appoint a city administrator the last time we talked. It was kind of, let's pass this, let's wait the required sixty-one days, and if we hire Jamie, we hire Jamie. So I did not repeal.
Well, we gave her a hefty raise.
I didn't even have to do the work yet.
I plan on going through it, I mean, we gave her a raise.
In other words, there's an escape clause to this.
Okay, well, don't mess up.
There's an escape clause for us?
For us, for you, if you decide we're not going to appoint somebody, because remember, this has to be published, and you have to wait sixty-one days because it's a charter ordinance before it takes effect. At that point, you're going to have to hire somebody.
I guess my question is, is she would still have the authority to approve him to spend over his spending limit if need be?
Right.
Okay.
And to tell you how it's going to be paid for and move money around with you, plus that kind of thing.
Right, right.
And I did.
By keeping him off, she, she can still tell him to spend money, by keeping him off of this, like.
She can approve him to spend the money over, yes, that's what I'm saying. This just keeps her from firing him and hiring him.
By removing her.
By, by the highlight.
The chief of police is going to have to come to council, whether to hire or fire.
Here's an example, is if, if you had to replace a department head, Jamie would go through the process of, of, of putting out, seek that person, interview that person, and then present that person at some point.
Except for the chief of police.
Except for the chief of police.
It's basically what this says, she would do all of that for every other department except for the chief of police.
And you just came up with that just because of the trouble we've had?
Yeah, because I've sat through long meetings with press and, like I said, it.
Basically, he's not putting it on Jamie, he's putting it back on us, that if Allen quits, we're the ones hiring the chief of police, not Jamie.
I'll comment at that. I'll comment at that.
There was no ulterior motive. I did not talk to Allen about that, I did not talk to Jamie about that. All I did was highlight it.
I, I'm good with the charter ordinance.
West of council?
Yeah.
What about our department heads? Do you, do you have any, do you have any?
No.
You're the other ones that are going to have to work under this, do you have any?
No problem whatsoever. I'm good with it.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve charter ordinance ten sixty-three nineteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
This takes effect sixty days from today or from the last meeting?
From publication.
It's published.
After final publication.
But it won't be published until next Wednesday.
So sixty-one days after next Wednesday.
And, and those spaces are for purposes of reading, if you need to re-space that so you can publish it cheaper.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay, moving on to executive sessions. Chief, how much time do you need for the first one?
Uh, first one, can I go, can I set a time, and then if we don't reach that time, we're okay? And we can come back early?
Well, no.
No, it has to be, no.
We can just keep adding.
Okay, we can add, well, give me, uh, give me fifteen minutes. I was actually going to go with that, I don't know that it'll take, but I'm sure you guys are going to have a lot of questions, so fifteen minutes.
To include?
Uh, all council, Jamie and the attorney.
We're going to have a stand out there for sixteen minutes.
We're staying there. We dismiss the seniors, they, they should get their points and.
I was going to say, do we need to sign their papers real quick?
Yes.
Just anywhere, have it.
Pass them, let.
One signature.
Just one signature.
Just one. I'll skate out the door.
I got to come back in.
Cash is going to cash out with my signature.
Hi, you too.
Kudos for breaking the flight on the highway thing. I don't know what you did, you deserve that, but I'm impressed. When you, when I got that, I'm like, boy, that is a tough gal bringing that in here.
Well, because I'm, I mean, our offices.
That's like a sacrificial lamb, that's not even fair.
You know, like, our offices in the same position, like, really.
Jim says it almost.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, I just came to the council in person, I said, Emma, I can't believe that they know our stance on the whole issue.
It's pretty life-changing, seriously. It's pretty life, it's beyond life-changing, as for a young person in this town. Everybody, whether they understand it or not, is beyond life-changing.
So you need to go in all time?
It is, it is.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see you guys.
I'll make the motion for Allen's, uh, executive session for fifteen minutes for, what was it again?
Attorney-client privilege?
Non-elected personnel. Okay, to include council, mayor, attorney, attorney general. Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I ordered that wrong.
Oh, okay.
Motion carries, five oh.
We will resume at nine oh four.
We can pay for those radars.
They give a gym ideas here.
Okay, uh, we have another executive session to discuss possible hire presented to the non-elected personnel manner exception under Jeff. Jeff, how much time do you need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
Do all you want.
Do all you want, all right.
Everybody sit around the table.
Okay, everyone include council, attorney, city clerk and mayor. Okay, we will resume at ten after. Do I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. We will resume at ten after.
I'm worried anything like that associated with it, but.
Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to hire Kate Wayback, um, at fifteen sixty-five.
Fifteen fifty is what we're thinking.
Fifteen fifty. I wrote it down wrong.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion?
With contingency that he will move to the city limits.
Within city limits in ninety days?
Ninety days, yeah.
From his rehire date?
Okay, okay. Okay. All right.
You're third, he's second.
The motion has changed, so he amended it.
Okay, he amended it, okay. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, five oh.
I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we have another executive session to discuss possible hire presented to the non-elected personnel manner exception with, uh, Chief Adams. Chief, how much time do you need?
Uh, we're going to go ahead and skip that one.
Okay.
We'll cancel that one out. That's the third one, correct? Yeah. Hire? Yeah.
Okay, so this one is executive, discuss employee performance, present to the non-elected personnel manner exception. You need everybody?
Yeah, everybody.
Okay, how much time?
Ten.
Ten minutes, okay.
Ten minutes, okay. Okay.
Salute.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries, five oh. We will resume this meeting back at twenty-three after.
Excuse me, if that's all right.
He'll give you a ride in the cop car.
Call the meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to go back into executive session to discuss employee performance with the same people for another ten minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, four oh. We will resume at nine thirty-four.
Soon as I open it up, I'll say.
Call this meeting back to order. We have one last piece of business to take care of under new business I collected to add this, this is the variance for, uh, two oh four South Monroe and a rezone of S and S Tire.
If you have any questions, you need to call Jeff back. So, um, two oh four, two oh four South Monroe, um, it's where Ty Cornwell used to live, it's the house that sits kind of diagonal. She's wanting to build, uh, pretty much a shed, and they're asking for a variance for, I think, seven feet, um, to the north there with the, what's it called?
Storm drain?
No.
So from the city right away, they want seven more foot?
Yes.
Instead of, they have to be a minimum twenty feet back, they can only be thirteen feet back instead of twenty, so they need a seven-foot radius.
From what directions? From the north side?
From the north side. And according to Jeff, it didn't create any hazard of line of sight view at the intersection or anything?
Because it's not for the west or the eastbound or the east side.
Right, right, I mean, there's plenty of, even where they're going to put it, it's just seven foot closer to the street than what's allowed.
Because it's back from the corner to the west then?
Yes.
Not parallel to the street.
Right.
So, the zoning, um, board approved both of these, but I have to come to you guys for final approval, and then I take it and mail out the letters, and then we'll schedule the public hearing and all of that. And then, uh, rezoning of S and S Tire, um, the zoning board looked at that, and they would like to rezon S and S Tire to industrial to meet, um, with four-star hard, four-star is industrial, so we were just going to look at extending.
So you're just squaring up the area?
Yeah, minus his house, we don't want to put his house under the industrial part of it, but, um, that is what their recommendation is.
Yes, because it's connecting what's industrial. Yes, it is connecting what's industrial. I actually want a commercial, but I guess I'll pay industrial property taxes, which is higher. But they wanted to make it, that's industrial and instead of doing a commercial, they wanted to just tie it all in to make that whole corner industrial.
I'd make a motion to accept this.
Commercial probably truly fits what you're doing better than.
What, I mean.
You look at the, no.
What's the regulations on like industrial, I mean, what?
What's the present cons?
Okay, so I'll tell you guys, the only two differences between industrial and commercial is all commercial properties in the city of St. John are not allowed to have outside storage of any type. Nowhere.
Unless their grandfather did.
Unless their grandfather did. So any new business in this town that goes commercial cannot have any type of outside storage. Anywhere. Doesn't matter whether it's inside or outside. Industrial allows it. That is the only difference. It was their recommendation to change it to industrial. All I wanted to do was commercial.
Because would your outside storage be grandfathered?
Hmm?
Would your outside storage be grandfathered?
He's too new with the business?
You, you had a special permit because your land was not commercially residential. Isn't that the way it was?
They wouldn't, they never wanted to rezone anything. They would give you a special use permit. Part of my complaint is, um, and I'll tell you what I told the zoning board. I'm only allowed to work seven in the morning till seven in the evening, Monday through Saturday. Outside of that, I'm in violation of my special use permit. My sign has to be on my building. The light that's on my pole in front of my building on my property took me an arm and a leg to get there because I'm not allowed to have a light that shines onto the property. I can have a light that lights up my sign, but not my property. I can't have more than two vehicles, two pieces of equipment, including my own, sit on the property for longer than 48 hours. All tires, everything has to be stored behind a fence, including customer tires, my tires, new tires, old tires. Everything has to be stored behind a fence. Absolutely no work on Sunday.
Currently, this is all current.
This is all current. This is what the special use permit.
So you're in violation of.
I'm in, no, I'm in total violation. I'm not going to lie about it. My thing is, is I pay commercial utilities to the city of St. John. I can't pay commercial property taxes to the county, which the city receives some of, but yet I am told what I can and can't do on my property. The other issue is, is I had a complaint about tires. I've made contact with the company that picks up my tires four weeks ago, maybe even a little longer than that. And, yep, we'll be there next week. They still have yet to show up and I've called them three times in the last four weeks. They won't pick them up behind my building, so if I want them to haul my tires off, I have to take them from behind my building, drag them out front. If they don't show up this week, I'm in violation. So if I get complaints, I have to take them behind my building. Well, when they say, well, we'll be there, I drag them back out. I don't have time for it. It's a tire business. There's going to be tires there. I try to keep it as clean as I can as often as I can, but I'm not going to spend two days hauling tires off instead of making money to pay my bills and put money back into the city.
I'll put my two cents worth, like, I made a motion for this pretty quickly. Uh, it just makes sense. We can't be nitpicking every little thing with businesses. I think it was on draw in the first place. Um, I was going to put in a business here and they threw at me the special use permit, the zoning board did. And, uh, I am building a quarter million dollar building outside of the city just because of how complicated things are in St. John. Uh, I'm about being more business friendly, working with people, bending some rules if we have to, to make things work for different businesses. So I'm just putting it out there. That's why I made a motion very quickly and for the future. I want you guys to kind of understand where I stand with things. It's just.
We need to do two separate motions, so.
Please.
Well, my two cents, I'd make a motion to accept, uh, the, what was it, for South Monroe variance. 204 South Monroe.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Five oh.
And then I make a motion to zone S and S Tire on West First from a special use permit to industrial use. That's it.
It's not a special, is it special? It is, okay, all right. All right, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Four oh. Standards and standards. All right, that being our last of the business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Five oh.